And to the Republic, British stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have two updates to the agenda. One of those under minutes, item B, it's actually the January 19th council meeting minutes that we're looking to approve. And under personnel, Gordon's wages are actually going to 1755 effective on the 4th of February. And those are the only updates that I'm aware of.
Motion to approve the agenda has changed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Kara's joined us, Misty.
Thank you.
Under claims, item A, bills in between. I'm sorry, no. Minutes, item A, January 4th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B, which we updated to the 19th.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is that discussion down there or?
I just couldn't remember which one I missed.
She was trying to remember when to abstain. Okay, which one did you abstain on?
It was the last one.
Okay, so I were taking a vote on the 19th, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, claims, item A, bills in between.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Current claims?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
On the second page, there are some coats, pants, beanie, gloves, belts, splash legs, spray, holder, and patch and socks. I'm assuming those are purchased for new employees. Do we use those under rotation or do we, are those purchased with new employees and or are they purchased on some sort of rotation and replenished to the employees?
Great questions. The police department has a $6,500 clothing budget. They allocate that $600 per officer per year. They do keep track of the things that are purchased. It does belong to the city. There's a number of different items that they purchase, but they do keep track of those, stay within their budget for the year, and all purchases have to be approved by the chief. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C, under claims, credit cards.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I am moving communications from the public. I have not been made aware of anybody with a specific item for this part of the agenda. If you want to speak and you're from the public, now's the time. Chris, please go to the mic.
I know it's snowing outside. My name is Chris Benow, and it's snowing outside right now. And I just saw the DOT truck on the How We Buy Health for Life Fitness, clearing snow. I'm just wondering why the city doesn't have their trucks out there right now, and are we gonna have a timely manner of removing the snow?
I passed a city truck coming here tonight.
Yeah, one went by the school at 4:00.
I just came down Galveston, and it's been piled once, please, sorry.
And the road by Health for Life is a state road.
Okay. So then why does my parents live on Evans Street, which is the last?
Priority streets.
They're not a main thoroughfare. We do have a snow removal policy to address our main thoroughfares and our steep hills first. I know they are not on a major thoroughfare or a steep hill, so they would not be a priority, but they would be plowed. Thanks, Chris. Anybody else? All right, I'm gonna move to personnel. Again, Gordon's pay will be going up to 1750 effective on the 4th of February.
Motion to approve, personnel.
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five, I'm sorry. Second, I'm sure again. Okay, I have a motion.
I'll second it.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried for 1755. Committee reports, I think you have been in finances next week, so, and I know you had an airport advisory meeting.
We did. We met on the 29th, and we still are discussing the runway access. And Eric Hanson, who was with the SEH, was contacted, and we're still working on access that would be favorable for our seat plane and what we would prefer. However, that may not be something that we get because of FAA, but we're still working on it. They're asking to, they're going to get some ideas of building repairs to be done out there. Mr. Hill is gonna do that. Pete Lean contract, we do have that, and we're looking at that a little bit, just to review it again for the gravel removal. They're still concerned about the weed control, and they're going to do some more investigation on that so they can start getting something under control here soon. And that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Georgia. Appreciate it. Kara, do you have a report from Chamber?
Yep, I sure do.
Kara's been a cover for the vacancy and Ward 2 for Deanne.
We had a meeting on January 27th. We went over the minutes in the financial report, election of officers. Lyndall is the new president, and the treasurer and secretary of Maine is Kristin, and also Terry Slagle. We have, we're seeking new board members to fill any of the slots. We have an event scheduled that we signed up for for 2016. All the board members signed up for an event. We went over committee recaps on the agriculture, ambassadors, tourism. We just had a tourism summit meeting in Kier. I went to that. Scott Hayden was there. Willie Colacannon from Angostura was there. Joe Allen and Deanne from Allen Ranch. And Joe Mueller won the Ben Blackalk Award for outstanding tourism patron for, you know, his years of dedication to the tourism industry. And very proud of Joe for receiving that honor. Events and promotions, we went over that, the Chamber, and the city will be doing a poster for all of the events that we have in 2016. There's quite a few of them, so we're gonna dedicate a poster for that that people can hang up in their storefronts. We went over the bid, Save the VA. There's still down here at the Chamber going over, they saved the VA. You can sign up and do your report, your EIS report for that if you're interested. If you have not, bridal showcase, we made the, just in the nick of time, there was cancellation, we made the bridal showcase in Rapid City. And we got to have a booth, and myself and Delise Simmons threw together some decorations, and we put that together at the last minute, and we had an outstanding response. There was everyone that we talked to at the bridal show said they'd come to Hot Springs, whether they're an event coordinator or have a tent company or ranchers or what have you, they'll come to Hot Springs to help us for any wedding events. Black Hill State University presentation, we talked about having that in Hot Springs in February. The date is still tentative. We're thinking about February 16th. Annual meeting for the March 12th Taste of Hot Springs, our 76th anniversary, there'll be an award for citizen and volunteer of the year. We have a guest speaker, and we don't know who that is yet. Glenn Miller Orchestra, April 12th at 7:00 p.m. Don't miss that. They're a very well-renowned band that'll play here at the Mueller Center. I know Olivia worked hard at getting them to come here, so we're really excited about that. And we had voted in a city liaison for the, to replace Deanne, which is me. And other info that we're working on is branding, kind of a slogan for Hot Springs, and that's going on right now. We're still in the process. We'll be discussing a more tourism meeting at 12:00 on Wednesday. If any of you are interested to find out what we're talking about, come to that. And that's about it.
Thank you, Ms. Perry.
Are those meetings, Kara? Sorry? When does the Chamber hold their meetings?
The Chamber is the third Wednesday at noon of every month. Tourism is the first Wednesday at 12:00 noon, and the bid is the first Wednesday at 1:00. Or actually, it's only four times a year, but we're having one for the bid this coming Wednesday.
Did I hear on the news today that they've extended the comment period to Monday till March 1st?
Yes.
That's been approved, and I think they're still trying to extend it 60 days, but I got a mixed report on that. I know for sure they were, they agreed to do 30 days, which puts it into March 6th. Have you heard officially, Joe?
Yes, I heard it was a six.
Okay, because we, I have received a message actually from our senator's office that they were shooting for a 60-day extension, but I have not heard that officially, so for sure the 30-day. And especially thanks to those who are helping, the non-Teckies submit for that. Thanks, Kara, that was a great report, appreciate it. Krista, did you wanna report on item D?
On what?
Item D, the next.
Oh, the wastewater?
Yeah.
Oh, waste, not.
Wastewater, favorite topic, our second favorite, waste management.
Well, I did go to the meeting, but.
I know you, you weren't officially covering for Deanne, I didn't know if you were.
No, I wasn't, but we, they did talk about, do you have my notes? For what I did with them.
I don't have your notes. It's okay, I'm not gonna put you on the spot. The next meeting, I think, is March 10th for your notes, so we'll officially assign someone to cover for that. Caroline, Downtown and St. George Preservation, I think that's later this week. That's Davd and Laura. Yeah, at the library. Nothing going on at the plunge. Kara, we'll let you speak again on item F, Evans Plunge Advisory Committee.
Actually, I wanna read a note from Chris, our facility director, regarding Evans Plunge. This was going into Mary Galley's newsletter. Greetings from Dusty, Evans Plunge. We are finishing up the week, first week of our scheduled maintenance closure, and we have made progress. The grinding around the pool deck is progressing nicely, and even this process makes it look better. Flooring in the cardio room is finished, and sections on the main level have been laid as well. The pool is drained, rock cleaning and leveling is happening, and the base of the wheel slide is being cleaned and ground as well. Our weight room pads on equipment that was looking so tough is at the upholsterer. Our volunteers have spent countless hours scraping, washing, rinsing, priming, and painting locker room walls, then cleaning out rooms. Our ceilings look wonderful with painted tracks and new dairy board cut to fit. Through it all, we have been well-fed with lunches provided by volunteers. Check out our photos on Facebook. There are so many positive thoughts and support swirling around the plunge as we work to make improvements. Thanks to all who are part of this in any way. We invite you to get on board and get excited for where we are headed. So, and I want to also recognize some of the people that have been working from the city and council down at the Evans Plunge volunteering. Mary Donnell has been down there painting away. Georgia's been down there working away. Krista Splain has been down there working away. Nolan has worked countless hours of his own time, and we really appreciate Nolan and all of his coordinating. Boden and Chris, they have been there for probably 15 years straight. They have really worked hard on organizing the volunteers and working, getting dirty. One day, I think Boden and Chris had just, you know, their faces were brown with spray paint, and they have these goggles on, and they're just getting dirty, getting things done. Steve Winia has been a great consultant for us with a lot of the mechanical stuff that we're doing down there and improvements. Kim Barbieri was down there painting away. And we've had the swim team, kids and parents, come down, so that was great. There was probably about 15 of them, I would say, working away outside, cleaning up the parking lot. So thankful, we're very thankful for all of the volunteers, and we have a few more days left, and so if any of you have time, just show up between 8:00 and 5:00 through February 7.
I have a question for you, Kara. I have three different citizens have commented on a number, and I don't know if this is true or not, that there are a number of city employees working down there. And if that is true, are they being paid out of the plunge budget to work down there? And then I guess why do we need city employees if we have all these volunteers?
I think I'll have Nolan, not to put you on the spot, but you're the one directly working with those people.
So some projects can't be done by volunteers, more advanced projects that are maintenance employees, and even water employees have helped out, have the skill set to do. So that's why we recruit labor from within to help with those projects. A lot of it's been the maintenance department, but we've had good help from the water department as well during a slower time of the year. Dog catcher? What's that?
The dog catcher.
The dog catcher? The dog catcher's interesting because he's salaried, and so his schedule's 24/7 daytime to the knees. So actually, not just Evans Plunge, but he always likes to help out on other projects too. He helped with the Centennial Park bathrooms last year, did the new signs up there, the police department lettering us filming. He's happy to be involved like our volunteers are as well.
That would answer the questions that I've had from the public.
I also wanted to ask Misty to report on the finances.
Just gonna give a little brief summary, some of the highlights. Looking at revenue and expenditures for the plunge 14 compared to 15, our revenue in 14 was around $720,000, our expenditures around $850,000. In 2015, our revenues were around $708,000, $708,000, and our expenditures were down to $704,000. In January of 2016, so just finishing off this January, our revenue was $24,440. That's with those closure days and this terrible cold weather. That's up $7,600 from 2015's January numbers. It's up $7,200 from 2014's January numbers. So capitalizing on these slower months has been, it's been very good for the plunge.
I do have one more thing I wanna go back to regarding the Chamber thing. At the tourism conferences was kind of important. They mentioned that our tourism for the state was 5.9 million, and that created 270 million, and the state tax had increased. So I thought that was an important number. I don't have the comparables from last year, but I believe last year was 5.4 million.
I think in general, we're up 15% in the region. That's good. Thank you. And Krista for parks, I know you had a meeting today.
Yes, we did, and, oh, sorry. Yes, we did, and we introduced a new member, Bill Peterson. He's moved here from Nebraska and has worked with the cities on ordinances there before and is an actual arborist. And he is a wealth of knowledge, and I think we all enjoyed meeting him, and yeah, so.
And he's offered to help?
Yes, and he's offered to help, and he's just going to be a wonderful asset, so that was really nice. And then we went over the draft of ordinances, and the discussion was about Centennial Amphitheater. We had that with a plan to move forward to admin committee. Discussion was also about the Welcome Back Park gazebo, where we were on it, and we have a plan to move forward with the actual visit to the park by the committee to see where it actually fit and where we could maybe actually park cars, and, you know, that is our plan. But we actually have to go there, measure it out, and actually look at it. So we decided to set up a, kind of like a field trip, I guess that's what I'd call it. And we're gonna go take a look at it, I don't know when. It will probably be part of the Parks and Parks meeting that we have, it'll probably be included with it. Signage was also discussed for the parks and the DOT's involvement. And then as far, I didn't have a chance to talk to Chris. I did call him, but usually we have a chance to kind of go over things that are coming up at the Mueller Center. But on the 11th, the Welcome Back movie night at 7:00, that's the 11th of February, he got me the calendar, so haven't had a chance to talk to him about it. And then there's community theater tryouts at 7:00 on the 8th. So if anybody's interested in those, be sure to attend, and that's all I've got.
Thanks, Krista. P and Z's later in the month, we have an item on the agenda to address with that. Public safety, Tim.
We had a short public safety meeting. We discussed police phones. We have a lot of policemen that are carrying their own phones. So after our last meeting, this has been brought up, and there was some discussion again on wages. That was all we talked about on the safety meeting.
You wanna just roll into public works?
Public works. We discussed the new garbage cans. Evidently, when we switched from one garbage collector to the other, we had replaced a lot of cans. We've got votes on buying new ones, I believe we'll vote on that tonight. We also discussed the campers in the right-of-way or on the street, whether there, there was some confusion between our safety person and the police department as to whether the campers parked in the street where they belonged to, or whether they were parked in the boulevard, if they fell under a different set of regulations. We've got that straightened out. The de-waterer for the sludge out at the wastewater plant, we're gonna vote on that tonight. Also, the Angostura water irrigation, the Albany job, street job is currently out of standstill. Hopefully, you'll get back up to that. But that spurred some discussion on how we're gonna do our future contracts. We've done contracts for these jobs. We're also, the state, if they've come out, changed the regulations on how much fluoride we have to have in our water. And because fluoride is a natural chemical, Hot Springs actually is below, we don't have to fluoride according to the new regulations. So if anybody'd like to buy 300 gallons of fluoride, contact City Hall.
Well, we're waiting for these state reports first, 'cause I know you're all really anxious to do that, but we're waiting for state reports on our water testing to make sure that we do not have fluoride, add fluoride at all going forward. We don't think we will, but we'll take bids soon.
The last I knew is this new regulation, when I was still there, I would've put it down to where we don't have to add fluoride. So that was public works. Next meeting is next Tuesday.
Thank you.
I also had somebody, one other city employee, asked me about the cell phone reimbursement along with the police department, so I don't know if that's something that can be maybe addressed or brought up at some time, but.
Is the employee that has a phone issued, city-issued phone?
No, no, she does not, but it's used all the time, yep.
That's something we're gonna have to look into and figure out, how many have got city phones, 'cause there's a lot of city phones out there, and how many have got their own personal phones, and how many will give them the choice. There's a lot of stuff to look into.
Do a cost analysis on what's gonna work and what isn't. Yep, absolutely. I just wanted to throw that in there, thank you.
We make that an agenda item for admin and finance, too.
Yeah, 'cause I didn't have it, I was approached on the street also.
Yeah, that's become a frequent topic.
That, I'll just go into golf course then. That was one of the things that Jason did express, he wanted to say thanks for doing that for him, because he communicates with his people by cellphone and texting and stuff like that a lot more now, and it is helping. So I agree, we'll put it on the admin agenda. Jason also said there's wood available to burn for the trees they've cut. They're at the parking lot out there at the golf course right now. Hopefully, we'll get rid of it soon. They have put some rocks up, so on the top, upper level, so that cars will not be tempted to go down to the lower level. It was a hazard. He also stated that most of the maintenance is pretty much done with our new maintenance person. He's very on the ball and doing a lot of good stuff up there. They are planning to travel to Sioux Falls, and both of them are going if we approve that tonight. He is anxious to start learning more about the turf upkeep and all that, so how it fits into whatever he's doing in the shop. I talked to Kathy, we didn't have any meeting, but I did talk to Kathy, and she says she's booking many tournaments. Things are moving along very well. She's doing extra cleaning and stuff like that, and ordering for supplies, and she said there's no issues right now to report.
Great, thank you, Georgia. It's a lot for the golf course in January, I guess it's February. And the volunteer fire department's next Tuesday.
Yep, away from tomorrow.
And it is a public meeting, so all are welcome. What time?
7:00, and the fire hall.
I would like to comment, if you don't mind. I went to one of their fire department meetings, and I asked some very pointed questions over what they do with the money we give them, and where it goes, and how it's spent. And they were more than happy to go over their finances, and their meeting was, everything broke down to where this dollar goes, that dollar goes. I mean, that was one of the questions that we've always had with the fire department's contract, is what do they do with our meeting? And I found that those guys are very open about it. So I'd just like to add that comment to the fire department. They were more than happy to work with me.
Absolutely, they're very open, and any questions you have, they're more than happy to answer them.
I have to agree with Tim. I went before you started, and that was the information I got, and it was, it was easy to understand.
Okay, I'm going to move to new business. Item A, discussion of possible motion regarding city council Ward 2 vacancy. I think you all received last time, or there's an inner package, their package, the state guidelines for filling a vacancy. So discuss away if you'd like. We need a motion first.
For that first?
I guess I'd make the motion that we fill the vacancy.
Okay.
Discussion. I would, I would like for, I think Nolan, you received a letter from Kia Warren. Maybe if you could read the first sentence of her letter? I have it here, if you wanna look at it.
I think it was email correspondence. And what it is, it's from the state. Kia Warren's with Chantel Krebs, Detective State. And they just shared with us the codified law that states the legal practice for the vacancy. She does recommend that the board fill the vacancy by appointment to serve until the end of the election in June, but there is not a law requiring that that be done at a certain time frame.
But she did recommend that we.
There is not a law, exactly how it says.
I guess I've got a couple of questions on if we fill that. I could fully understand if we had a year and a half till our election was coming up, or if we had a year till our next. or if we had a year till our next election was coming up. But we've actually only got, what, June is what the election is?
Four and a half.
About four and a half months. And by the time we jump through all the hoops that we need to jump through to get to appoint somebody to this, it's gonna be down to where there's gonna be about a month or two months left. So I'm wondering if it's really fair to appoint a person to a position for two months?
I feel that the ward is not being represented if there isn't two representatives in that So I feel that they should, either we...
It's not fair representation.
Yeah, it's just not fair representation, I guess, for them, so...
Also, if you have somebody elected, I mean, if we elect someone to fill that spot, that person has four months' experience, and maybe they'll run in the summer for election. What's wrong with that?
On the flip side of that is, if I was contemplating running and the council appointed somebody else to that position, I'd look at that as, well, why should I run?
Then why couldn't that person come forward and be appointed?
That's what I'm saying. All these people can apply.
Right.
But if we appoint one out of five people...
Well, you don't know that you'll have five people.
It's unfair to the other four. The other four are gonna say, well, why don't you...
It's been done twice in the last 10 years. Let's do one at a time. It's been done twice in the last 10 years.
I have a tendency to agree with you, Tim, on this one. But I do wanna know, is there anybody who's interested in self-nominating themselves?
I can't understand what you're saying.
Is there someone interested in running in that position? Has somebody come forward in Ward Two? Don't we know of?
I understand, is this has to be advertised in the paper, right?
They say when we put it in the paper, then they come to City Hall.
They come to City Hall.
So in the Star, last week, there was a headline, I think it was, that we had a vacancy in the newspaper. For, you know, for legal purposes, we can do a supplemental, put it in the legal section, we have a vacancy, we're accepting nominations, we're accepting people to self-nominate, to clarify. But I presume if somebody was truly interested to see that headline last week, attend this evening, I don't make assumptions for the whole council, but typically that'd be, I think, a normal course of action. That said, if we do decide to fill the position or look to fill the position, the city, we can advertise there's a vacancy in the legal section to make sure that it's publicly informed.
You don't really have to go that expense, though. It's not required by law.
No, we don't, but if we can get a front-page headline to draw, if someone's interested...
If somebody doesn't come forward, that's fine, but I think we are doing a disservice to that ward if we don't offer it up there for somebody to come forward and say, I want to represent that ward. If someone doesn't come forward, then it's a moot point. But if we don't offer it to the ward, then that's shame on us.
Andrea, how do you propose we offer it?
Well, I mean, put it out there.
It's been done twice. Are you proposing? Let me, Andrea, okay, thanks. Are you wanting us to put an ad in the paper? I guess that's the point. Or how do you, you want us to do something more than what we're doing right now to advertise it?
Um, yeah, as I say, it's probably...
I can tell her how it's been done previously. Carl knows, and I know, because we were both there. It just was in the paper that there was a vacancy. From this council, it would be in the paper on Tuesday, and it would be in the minutes. And whoever's interested, if they're not interested enough to read the paper or read the minutes, then you wouldn't really want them anyway. Then in two weeks, people would come in for this meeting. You would ask who's interested. They stand up and say why, and then we vote. So you're okay with just putting it in the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, that's...
I mean, that's just my opinion, but I'm just wondering.
Well, I, no, I'm just clarifying what you're, what I'm hearing, I think. Okay, so...
Well, there's no extra cost if we do it that way. So I have no problem with doing it that way, but if you wanna vote on it, that's fine.
Well, I need a different, or I need a...
Motion.
Well, I have a motion to fill it. So if we're assuming that just putting it in our minutes, that there's an opening that that's showing availability for someone to self-nominate?
You can always put it in Happenings, it doesn't cost a penny.
Or Facebook.
Right.
Because people have to be from Ward Two.
Of course. Right, and I do think it would be fair for them. Deanne's missed two months of meetings, so that would be a total of half a year that Ward Two has had one person, and that's not right.
I guess that was my understanding from past history, that there's been times that wards have went without, with just one representative for years.
If you want the history of that, I'll give it to you, but I don't think you want it.
Well, and people can talk to anybody in the council, and they do. I'm well aware of people not in the same ward talking to council. And, but I, if you're fine with it just being in our minutes, that we have a vacancy in Ward Two and see what happens, I'm fine with that, if that's what we're proposing here.
And Facebook.
Should I alter the motion to have it to, that we have someone come forward, whoever's interested, at our next meeting, which would be the 15th, 16th, and that it would be in maybe Happenings, Facebook, and our minutes in the paper? And I bet he puts something about it in the paper.
Chamber.
So you're...
Chamber.
You're mending your original motion to include publishing it?
Yeah, in those things, yep.
Okay, I need a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor of the motion presented, a little, it's lengthy, so I won't restate it, but to advertise the vacancy in Ward Two? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Do we have a tie, or do, we need to do roll call, 'cause I'm not hearing...
Carl Lachley?
No.
Kara Hagan?
No.
Georgia Holmes?
Yes.
Andrea Kramer?
Yes.
Carolyn Schwartzbach?
Yes.
Tim Tesser?
No.
Kristis Blaine?
No.
Four no's and three yeses.
You all think it'll be really good. But it'll be in our minutes, so I think we're sort of okay there. All right, new business. Item B, discussion of possible motion to approve annual Angostura irrigation district contract.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Who's seconded that?
Thank you.
Motion carried. New business. Item C, motion to set public hearing for the 16th of February at 7:10 p.m. for proposed ordinance revision, Chapter 27A dot 06 dot 05, parking requirements.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carried. This is an important one, so I hope you all read up on it for next week, or next two weeks. Item D, motion to set public hearing for the 16th at 7:20 p.m. for a temporary alcoholic beverage license application for Winter Circle for the 16th of April for a wedding at the Flatiron.
Motion to approve.
Seven.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh.
Motion carried.
Same.
Thank you.
And I do think that dates from?
4/16?
April?
Yeah. That's what we have on our application.
It's in your packet. So, yeah, it's 4/16/16. So if you think that's wrong, please let us know before the 16th of February.
Let us know, like, tomorrow, because I'll have to public a notice.
Okay, item E, motion to approve bid from Vesco Incorporated to furnish and deliver sludge press equipment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item F, discussion of possible motion to approve purchase of 96-gallon residential trash totes from Toder.
I would like to make a motion that we purchase 250 of those totes. Second motion.
Is that what is presented to us?
Yeah. What is being presented, it's not clear in the information, is that we've been quoting around $50 per tote with a fixed freight charge. They can fit up to over 600 on one truck. And so if we wanted to avoid having to pay a future freight charge for the next order of totes in the future, maybe two, three years down the road, we can bulk buy now and save the freight for future purchase. And so really, the council, the funding is available in the solid waste fund for up to 600 if you so choose, but it's up to this group tonight to decide the quantity. It's being recommended by those in the Public Works Committee, 250 is being the quantity.
Do we have storage?
So that freight is locked in in 2001 or 2012?
We can order one tote, 600 totes, still to accommodate.
Out of them.
There is, there's, there's snow removal sand at the city shop. That's where they are currently, and there's room there.
How many of these 250 would be used immediately?
Most likely none. We have 40 right now on reserve. We put those 40 up first, then we'd have the other ones to replace out as needed. If you look, there's two styles out there. One is a darker green. It's a pretty thin plastic that's been out there for quite a while. The new style is that brown speckled with the hot springs splash stamped onto it. That is designed by Toder, it's much more durable. So we anticipate the old ones to be broken or to not last us much longer, so we have these ready on hand, and we'll swap them out as we lose the old ones. We always make the effort to repair the old ones, but if there's a cracked one or somebody puts, what you cannot do, puts ashes in the trash can, burps a hole through it, then we're at a loss. Usually, the loss is, if it's negligence, the owner's responsibility, but we still lose the trash can.
Nolan, how many did you replace last year, do you know?
Well, we just replaced a whole bunch when we switched contractors, because a lot of our trashcans that were out there weren't in good condition, so we just replaced about 80 of them in the last three weeks.
What's our total that we have?
We had 144 ordered last year from Toder. So we're down to around 40 left from Toder to stock.
Is the $10,000 for the 250?
No, it's only for 136 of them. So you're saying to purchase 250, which is what, $16,000 for something that were not even being used?
Not immediately, but then you factor in using them in the future. So basically, you're making an investment that's gonna last us years in the future to avoid an increased freight charge down the road.
Unless this council decides to go with a different contractor, or unless the colors change, or unless you guys decide to do, get a different unit, or...
You're a higher contract. The totes are always going to be the city's responsibility, the way we transition from private garbage haul from the city to a commercial contracted out, so we always have the totes available. That part's fixed.
And also, the contract with the vendor is, there's a termination clause in there, too, so we could get out of it if we had to. So again, if...
You're still gonna use the same totes.
We still have to pay the owners to furnish the totes.
And we spend $17,000 now for something that we won't use in maybe three years.
You could make a recommendation for smaller...
Well, we could, we could purchase just 136 and pay, let's say, we just replaced 104 of them this year. We do that again next year, now we're down to 34, or 32, and we have to purchase again. Do we wanna pay $3,000 in shipping for another 136?
It's $2,000. But also, we said, also the...
Consider the increased cost, too.
I understand it, but if we only, if we only replaced 80 this year because...
The last three weeks.
Because of the switchover in the vendor, that's only 80.
How old are those that you've replaced?
The old ones replaced? They have varying dates, I have two different styles, but they're both, I don't have the date on.
Approximately, what, four or five years they've been out? I don't know what's...
I'm not sure.
Even longer than that?
It's just the amount. I mean, Andrea, it doesn't have to be 250, but we're down to a pretty small inventory.
I'm just saying, it's a lot of money to stuff into a shed and not actually utilize it, that's all I'm saying, I guess.
Well, I'm saying, let's propose a number that we're all okay with then.
The motion is for 250.
Great.
I'll second it for the 250, I think that's...
I have a second. You do it for Andrea.
So, yeah, we were just doing discussion on 250, so I'm gonna do a vote of...
This money comes out of the solid waste, money that we've got set in there that is there. So it's not that we're hurting the other, it doesn't come out of streets or parks or anybody else's.
The general fund.
The general fund, it comes out of the solid waste fund that we're collecting for year after year, and we're not doing anything with it.
It would be good. It's a good thing.
Call it up.
All in favor of 250 totes to be ordered? Signify?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carried for 250. Thank you for the discussion. Item G, discussion of possible motion to approve golf course superintendent and golf course equipment manager travel request, and that is in your packet.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Discussion.
Both of the requests said $2,000. Is that just the amount in the budget that was the total for the $2,000, or are they saying, they are saying that both of them are gonna spend $2,000?
So it's not to exceed $2,000.
Jason made the note that it's not to exceed $2,000. $2,000 isn't in their budget. I honestly don't expect them spending over $1,000, the way Jason described it. They're carpooling over. Jason proposed actually sharing a hotel room, which is...
Correct.
Which is even more than...
And state rates are like 50. Okay, I was just asking for clarification. He wrote that will not exceed on the one, but the other one also said the $2,000. I was just asking for clarification. Thank you.
That's a good question. Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Finance Officer, report, please.
Tomorrow, weather permitting, we'll have three council members attending the legislative grid dinner in Pier.
Weather permitting?
Weather permitting. And spend some time watching the legislature in action at the municipal day in Pier on the 3rd. So I have Kara Hagan, Georgia Holmes, and Kristis Blaine, committee committee, going to that. So thank you for representing our city. So vacant is out at the finance office, and we got a lot of calls today, so I wanna share this with the public, and hopefully we get some newspaper coverage for this as well. Water deposit refunds have been issued. It was something that was passed by ordinance years ago in our water ordinance stating that customers who have been in service for at least 12 months and in the last 12 months have not had any late or delinquent payments would receive their water deposit back as a refund. And so that shows up as an adjustment on your bill. Your water deposit bill may have a credit on it this month, depending on how much your deposit was. And the reason for that is for paying your bill on time and being in service for 12 months, you're no longer gonna hold on to your deposits.
It's good to see that finally happen. It's something that our utility billing clerk had been working on for quite some time.
I finished the W2s and the 1099 reportings, and I'd like to announce that I got the city online with the IRS and Social Security Administration. That definitely will save us time, definitely saves us money, since we don't have to buy the special forms for them to read them when we mail them in. And there's also less risk of reporting errors since when you submit those things electronically to the check for those things. We did receive certification from the Barbara County Auditor's Office this week for annual taxes levy for 2016, so that's good news. We're, I think, about $29.50 less than what we asked for. I called and questioned why that was, and it's for rounding, so... And I also wanted to talk about the annual district meeting that's coming up in March. I believe most of you got information about that. We are in District Nine. Our meeting will be March 23rd in Hill City at the Berryberry Winery. We have to RSVP by March 9th. Mayors, council members, city officials, and guests are invited to attend. The meal for any guests is $29 apiece, and I think last... And I think last year we had very good attendance at our district meeting that was held at Shrazy Place. And so we'd like to represent our city again. If anyone's interested, don't go, please let me know. And on a bright note, I got to help someone today sign up for recycling. And I'd like to note that 91 people have signed up for recycling recently.
Thanks, Misty. And I really do appreciate, I know the things that you report on are always all, you know, the flashy things or blingy things. But bringing us up into the 21st century is really important to me and I really appreciate your efforts there. And of course, the employees appreciate the W2s, so. Nolan?
Just go around. My report's extremely short. We are, had a summer rec meeting with our summer rec director this Friday. Just kind of get the ball rolling with that. Be on the lookout for a resolution at the next council meeting establishing our 2016 part-time rates with a new raise in minimum wage, 855. That does affect our part-time or seasonal positions. So be a resolution establishing that. And other than that, that's all I had to report on. A lot of the work I do is in the committees that you were all on or in the work that was just done tonight or coming up in the future. I should point out though, not this upcoming Monday, I'll take that back, it is this upcoming Monday, at 1 p.m. City Hall is admin finance. It was recommended the last meeting to table the personnel policy to this meeting to be further discussed and reviewed. So that'll be on the agenda for that item, that meeting. And then assuming that there's consensus from that meeting, we'll go ahead and have that back on the agenda for the full council on the 16th. For those attending, this is 15th, it is President's Day observation. So we'll be convening here again on the 16th, 7 p.m., same place, same time.
Annex.
I'm the annex.
Take that back, same time.
You can take that?
One of the last few nights.
Okay. So it's 16th, 7 p.m. Over to the annex.
Thank you, Nolan. I think I'm just gonna spend a lot of time thanking people, although Kara did a lot of that for the plunge. But thank you, Misty Nolan, for preparing us for tonight. I definitely want to thank the city staff who've been helping out at the plunge. A lot of good progress there. Definitely want to thank the volunteers for all their hard work. I think you probably have some bloody knuckles from scraping, so thanks, Barb. I know you've put a lot of time in there as well. I'm very bad at painting, so I'm trying to keep out of your way. But appreciate all that and all the food the volunteers have been bringing. Just, I couldn't be happier with the work that's going on down there. I really appreciate all the work. Also, the fire whistle's been going off a lot lately, so I just want to take a moment to remind the public that we do have a volunteer fire department. They've been out on a lot of cold nights, cold mornings, tonight as well, Sundays. The whistle went off quite a bit. So just wanted to remind the public that we need to be grateful for those who serve us in our fire department. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.